Hello and welcome to the Wakefield Public Schools School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, February 25. We'll call this meeting to order. Contrary to our agenda, we did not have an executive session this evening. I'd like to start this meeting as you do every meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the young voices in the studio, I thought I was in the classroom for a second. That was great. Good job. I'll begin by reading our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on our agenda would be public comment, and I don't think we have anyone in the studio for public comment per se. Do we have anyone online? And we do not. Moving on, before we move into our consent agenda, I'd like to welcome our students who have won the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light sticker contest. Maybe some of the adults that are representative can talk a little bit about the contest and what are sort of the students that are here had to do to sort of get to this place and be honored in that way.
Thank you. I'm Marguerite Oenbrenner. I'm the elementary staff coordinator. I'm thrilled to be coordinating this project alongside the gas and light department and also St. Joe's. This is mostly our primary teachers. Olivia Hayes from gas and light department is going to do most of the talking, introduce us, and then we'll call up the fourth graders for their voice.
So, welcome everyone again. I'm Olivia, and welcome to our annual WMGLD Energy Conservation Art Contest Awards Ceremony. So, this contest started as an essay contest actually for the fifth graders, started in 2007. Three years ago, we did change the format and the grade level were both changed to an art contest for the fourth grade students. This year, over 300 artwork designs about energy conservation were submitted from the fourth graders in all four elementary schools and St. Joseph's School. The judges, including myself, had a difficult task. We were picking the winning artwork from a great assortment of entries. And before we recognize the winners, I just want to give a special thanks to Marguerite for coordinating our project for us, also all the fourth grade teachers, as well as Beth Coppinger, the principal at St. Joe's, Mr. Doug Lyons, and Cara Morrow, the superintendent and assistant superintendent of the Wakefield School System. So, this year, our contest started back in October during Public Power Week and Energy Awareness Month, when our general manager, Pete Dion, spoke to the fourth grade class via video explaining what energy conservation is and what measures the town of Wakefield takes to conserve energy and what the students can do to help out. A couple of weeks ago, after meeting with the panel of judges, the student winners were announced. So, tonight is our big finale of the whole process, showcasing the hard work and talent of all the participating students, and especially focus on all of our winners here tonight. So, 39 entries were selected, and of those 39, 32 of them are semifinalists, and seven were selected as winners. So, we do have most of the winners here with us tonight, so I will announce them.
I will go ahead and give the school committee either a poster and a set of each stickers or window things. And fourth graders, when Olivia calls your name, you can come up here, I'll give you your certificate, and then you can stand here and hold your share poster, everyone has been called up. If you have your poster, you can bring it up and you can hold that or your certificate. It's up to you.
Perfect. So, we will go alphabetically. So, we'll start Zoe Barshewski is unable to make it with us today. And then next, we have Emma Charles. And Kyle Dan. Claire Feldman. Sarah Hildeman. Sullivan Kip. And Audrey Sinsalik. And would love to just take pictures, Marguerite said.
Yes. Can you swing around a little bit? Can you swing around a little bit?
Oh.
Squeezing.
Want to swing around a little bit? Please swing around a little bit.
Yeah.
She's up to the hood.
Oh.
There we go. Are we scooching?
We can scooch.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you guys and congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's go, guys.
Thank you so much for coming by.
Thank you.
And for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Ari.
Folks, we can raffle off these window stickers. They rise, they're all individuals, so you know, we can buy for who gets their favorite. That is always such a great, a great way to get the kids involved. Love that they include St. Joe's. It's awesome. Just like that. It's always a letdown with the kids. Kids go first.
Not that we aren't enthusiastic about that.
Okay. Well, thank you for those who are sticking around. Moving on, we have our item number seven is our consent agenda, and I believe, oh, we don't have them. Acceptance of the minutes. You want to do a motion on the fly because I think we're missing it from our motion sheet?
I don't think we have the minutes in the pack, and so there was nothing to.
Who approved the minutes on the motion sheet?
Oh, do I not have the most updated?
Is it wrong?
The updated one doesn't have them in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just see a motion for the guests.
That's what I thought. Okay. Well, we'll pass on those till our next meeting.
There is, okay.
Was I missed?
No.
Okay.
But it's still a motion.
We don't have the minutes.
Oh, the minutes aren't.
Yeah.
I thought you meant the motion wasn't.
No, 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 no.
Gotcha.
All right. Well, we'll move on from that.
Never mind.
For budget items, I believe, Christine, you want to present the budget items and then we can make a motion on?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we only have two gifts to accept. We have a motion to accept two gifts. We are fortunate to have two very generous gifts to accept tonight. There is a motion.
Yep. Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $3,000 from the Wakefield Girls Basketball, stipends for two assistant girls basketball coaches for the 2024-2025 winter season.
Second.
Motion's being seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? That's unanimously.
And move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $50,000 from Andrew Lombara in memory of Ella Lombara for the Wakefield Athletics Program, and $25,000 for the Wakefield Middle High School Football Program, and, oh, sorry, Wakefield Memorial High School Football Program, and $25,000 for the Wakefield Memorial High School Athletics Program.
Second.
Motion's being seconded, any discussion? You look like you were going to say.
No, I mean amazingly generous donation. I actually went to Google to learn about Ella. Looked like she was a teacher at the tech and a Wakefield resident. I assume her son must have been a Wakefield resident and involved in the sporting programs at the school. It's just very generous, so I just want to send thanks on behalf of all of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can craft a letter and have it signed by school committee and administration, get that over to them.
Okay. No further discussion, those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. That was it for financial.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine is superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Christine. I have two items left under superintendent remarks and reports. We welcome Glavia Smith, who's with us this evening, who's going to give us an update on the MECA program. We're also going to be making a trip to Boston in the spring, but she's just going to give us a quick update now, and we'll get more information when we go to Boston as well. Glavia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, thank you for having me tonight. I just want to give some update on the MECA program. So, this year, we were able to enroll 60 students, which is, we are about eight students down from our regular numbers. It's not due to us, it's not due to our inability to enroll students. I think it's just an issue around MECA ain't getting the amount of files that we need in order to fill the seats that we may have available and the grades that we can fill. So, this year, we had 27 high school students, 21 middle school students, and 12 elementary. So, I'm always working to try to increase our elementary numbers, which I find to be a little difficult these days because I think Wakefield is expanding, so then our numbers in our elementary cohorts is getting smaller and smaller. But you know, we'll work with what we have in regards to enrolling students, and I'll continue to work with principals around how to be creative around those things. This year, we have about our biggest graduating class, which is about nine students. And my goal this year is to fill those, at least half of those nine seats, or all nine of the students that are graduating. I do want to do a special shout out to Wakefield Memorial High School, the staff at the Bridge Program, and also our student support. We have two special students, one who looks like he will be able to graduate as a senior even though he's really a junior. He really did some good work with both the Bridge Program and the staff over at the high school to get that done. Another student I have is, he started in the 10th grade. He really struggled to stabilize and to transition into Wakefield. He struggled the first year, the second year, he was smooth sailing. He will be graduating this year, so I do want to do a special shout out to Wakefield Memorial Staff for all their hard work and their commitment to our students, and also not giving up on them, and also just encouraging them and inspiring them that they are wanted at the school. We want them to stay, we will support them, and they worked really hard with both of these students to make sure they accomplish their goal, which is of high graduation. And I would just like to, I know the parents are very grateful for all the work they put with both those students. The last thing I want to touch base on, we were able to apply for a grant, and MECA was, Wakefield was awarded the MECA REI Grant, which is work for racial equity and diversity work. So, we are currently doing, what are we doing? We are hoping our district will provide every student with an equal opportunity to succeed and thrive, and through that, we will be doing equity audit around to embark on a comprehensive external audit to ensure that we are living the processes to help understand where we stand and to guide our efforts to ensure access and opportunity for all our students. So, basically, we're looking at our higher grades in the sense of how much access do all of our students have to AP courses and honors courses so that it is equitable across the district. So, we are working with a consultant, Ms. Angela Burke, who has over 20 years of experience in education. So, that is an ongoing audit that we are working with. So, I'm hoping once this audit is complete, we'll be able to share some of the result with the school committee. Other than that, I think that's all I have. So, hopefully, when we meet in May in Boston, I'll be able to add some more to the update. So, thank you for having me.
That's great. Do we have any questions for Glavia? Anyone? No? All right. So, Glavia, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say thank you for informing us on sort of the, I can imagine as our enrollment increases sort of in the town, that that does sort of take up some available seats for the program. And so, I just kind of want to share an appreciation for like patience at the MECA level. I know we want to keep that relationship strong, and just some of these other pressures can be a challenge, but appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glavia. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, next, we welcome Amy McLeod, who's going to pitch hit tonight for Erin Manzi, who's not feeling too well, to talk a little bit about our trip, upcoming trip that she's seeking approval from school committee for. Amy, before you start on the trip, could you say a little bit or share a little bit with the committee and the public that might be watching about the Bridge Program that Glavia spoke to a moment ago? Because I'm not sure everyone knows about the work that's been done in that space.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So, yeah, I'll talk about the Bridge Program first. We have expanded our Bridge Program over the past couple of years. It is a program that's modeled after the Bright Program, which is a program that is founded really across the country. And what it has been designed for is sort of a therapeutic support program for students who are coming back to need to transition back to a regular schedule. So, what this could be is a student who is coming back, originally, it was for students who came back from a medical absence, and they would need time to kind of catch up and be supported to be back into school, so they might spend part of their day in Bridge. And it's expanded, right, to support students who may be struggling with school avoidance, students who may be struggling with anxiety, who can't get through full classes. And what Bridge provides is a school adjustment counselor, and sometimes academic support teachers throughout the day who are in Bridge, who can work with students who come into Bridge, who need some time to decompress, who need to learn some strategies to sort of readjust themselves and regulate themselves and get back to class. So, it's really a soft landing place for, I know, the student that Glavia is talking about, and that student has continued to use Bridge as sort of a safe space for them when they feel themselves getting frustrated because they have so much work to do, or they feel behind, or they feel that they just need a trusted adult to sit and help them step through the work. That student can leave class, go to the Bridge Classroom, spend some time there, and then again, the goal is to get everybody back to class as soon as possible.
Thank you so much, Amy. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Now, I'm going to switch my hats and put on my Erin Manzi hat. So, I'm pleased to be able to present for Erin. I want to say that all the work that I'm presenting tonight, I did not do. It is all Erin's work. We owe all of this to her hard work on these programs. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Rome, Sorrento, and Athens trip that we're proposing for next April. So, I think that, you know, when you talk about these trips, the next slide talks about sort of the educational importance of these slides. I am lucky to have been a chaperone on this trip last year, and I saw firsthand how the students there really got a sense of cultural and global awareness and an appreciation for places that they, I don't think they can imagine, some of these ancient sites that we visit and the experiences that they have there. The trip itself kind of aligns with the goals of the World Language Department, to really help broaden kids' skills and their perspectives of the world, so that they understand that, you know, our perspective is just one perspective in a very large world. And, you know, I just have to say on a side note, maybe not an educational objective, but to watch these students sometimes travel outside of the country for the first time and have their eyes kind of open to what's out there in the world is just the most awesome thing to experience as an educator, to watch the kids do this. So, it's really a terrific opportunity for them. The next slides, we're going to go into some of the details of the trip, but essentially, we provide this opportunity for world language students who are, they'll be juniors and seniors. Am I doing that right? My years are all mixed up now. Yes. And so, we, the trip takes off before, the Wednesday before vacation starts. It goes through the Saturday of vacation, and as you can see here, the trip is split between four nights, which are stationed in Rome with a day trip to Florence, and then heading out to Sorrento with a side trip to Capri or Capri, and then spending the last two days and nights in Athens. The tour company that we use is a tour company that we have established a relationship with. I believe the first trip with passports happened more than 10 years ago, when Lucia D'Amela, one of our former teachers, started this trip with them. And the cost of the trip, you can see on the slide there. It is a costly trip, but I will say that everything is taken care of. We can go to the next slide where they talk, we talked a little bit about Erin's details, kind of what it entails, the number of excursions, the guided tours, the bilingual tour guides that stay with us, so there are tour guides that travel with us, as well as specific tours, tour guides who meet us at sites, break the kids up into groups, take them through these experiences. It really is worth every penny that the students pay. The accommodations are wonderful, the breakfast and the dinners are included in the trip. Students generally have some free time in the middle of the day. We explore places where they can get food, so they pay for that on their own, but other than that, every excursion, every piece of transportation is included in the trip. And as you can see, they are very full, long days. I think Erin and I looked at our little trackers, and I think students are walking upwards of 20,000 steps a day. So, they are incredibly busy trips. So, the next slide, Erin has kind of laid out the process through the dates. This seems early, right, to start talking about a trip already, but as we get there, you can see that we already start trying to get approval from you, and once we get that approval, we start with registration. So, we haven't even gone on this year's trip, and Erin's already planning for next year's trip, having Zoom meetings for parents and trying to get students in and buy the early registration so they can save some money on the trip. Once that is done, there are more trips working with the company, I'm sorry, more meetings working with the company, helping parents figuring out the billing schedule, how they're going to pay for it. We can talk about that on the next slide a little bit, but then through next year, continuing to meet with parents, guiding them through the process, and getting the students ready for travel. So, on the next slide, you'll see the cost breakdown. There is an early plan, which saves them a little money. You can see the estimated monthly breakdown. There is also, you know, the final payment is based on the group size. So, if the group was a little bit smaller, the trip would cost a little bit different. Usually, we aim for around 35 students. That's about how many are going this year to Paris and Barcelona. I know last year, we had a very large group go to Italy and Greece. I think we took almost 50 students with us, and that's because we hadn't had a trip there through COVID. So, some of the students who had taken Latin and Italian were really interested in going on that trip, so we took a larger group, but generally, it's around 35 students or so. You know, the next slide, I did talk a little bit about why passports, they're an excellent company with a really incredible reputation. Not only have we worked with them reliably for the time that I said, they seem to have great relationships with the excursions and the facilities in Europe, which is really important, right? You want people who have experience in the places that we're going to keep students safe, to know where to take them, to know where not to take them, so that we have trusted tour guides the entire time. They really, I think the greatest part is having the full-time tour director with us. Last year, the last trip to Italy and Greece, we had two tour directors with us, because it was such a big group, and they were wonderful. They worked well together, they worked with Erin and the other chaperones to really make sure that the trip was safe, that everybody was on the same page, and it was amazing how well they helped us organize a group of that size. Erin's included some slides in there about what's included for travel protection. I know Christine has worked with us and the company to make sure that the contracts make sense and that everything is done by the book, right? We want to make sure that the companies that we work with are trustworthy and that they are signing contracts that make sense to our legal folks. There is an opportunity for about a $200 extra fee. People can do the peace of mind, so that if you had to cancel up to the last minute, some parents choose to do that, you don't have to. And then finally, you know, I think the question that we get all the time is that, you know, it is a trip that does, like I said, it costs a significant amount of money. However, at the high school level, most high schools do run programs like this. It's not something that is able to be offered to all students, unfortunately. However, there is some money that comes back through the program that we're able to use so that if a family is able to come up with, you know, there are some options where some small scholarships that can be available as needed. So, we have been able to do that in the past. But again, I would go back to the first slide that talks about kind of the deep educational impact of these opportunities, especially for our students who are interested in exploring language further in college, who are interested in being international studies majors, and who really are at that higher level of language, and so want to immerse themselves in the countries. So, I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. If there are other questions, I actually, Erin has lost her voice, so I can text with her if there's something I can't answer, but if there are questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Any questions, Ms. McLeod?
It's a great opportunity.
This is great. Yeah. I think we're just envious. I think it's just, yeah, yep, everyone wants to go.
Did I mention that I'm going to Paris and Barcelona again this year?
No, you didn't even left that out.
That'd be salt in the woods.
I left that part out, Al. Well, I mean, it's nice to have an administrator on the trip. No one else wanted to go, so maybe a school committee member could slip into the future. I don't know, I'm just saying. It is a lot of work. I will say, I want to put a plug in for the chaperones. Our chaperones who are planning this trip, it is a lot of work, but again, I have to say, the kids have such a great experience. I, it's one of the best things I think we do with some of our language students. It's just incredible, so.
Yeah.
So, shout out to Erin Manzi for all the hard work she puts into this because it's incredible.
Erin Manzi is such a distinguished leader in this space, and I think she does such a nice job. It's amazing. So, we can't thank her enough. And thank you for going on the trip. All joking aside, it is a wonderful experience, but it's not like you're going on vacation and you're going to be there, you know, chaperoning kids, and that's, and please, it's heart-filling work, but the fact that the high school principal is making the trip, I think, makes a big difference for kids and for faculty and chaperones that are making the trip as well.
Absolutely, and I think the safety value of that, too, like there are decisions that we need to make on the fly, and it is helpful to have an administrator on the trip to make some of the decisions that need to be made, you know? And I think sometimes for students, there's a different level of seriousness. We can still have a lot of fun, but the trip has guidelines, and Erin and the other chaperones lay out a real kind of tight criteria for the trip, and students follow it, and that's important because it keeps everybody safe, and that's the most important part.
Glavia may be available for the Italy trip. I don't know. Check.
We already discussed the stuff. She already threw her hat in the ring, don't you worry.
Don't miss me much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
That is great. I will, I'll put in a personal story, which is that my family just went to Quebec for the Winter Carnival, and it is the presentation made to school committee about taking the eighth grade class to Quebec for Winter Carnival was directly responsible for my family going. And sort of experiencing it personally, I can vouch for sort of the level of education that was there, and just being immersed in another culture was amazing. I did have to, when my oldest was talking to other kids on a snow pile and not knowing why they weren't launching when he was suggesting to make a snowman, I had to remind him that they speak French, and he was curious why they don't speak English, and I was like, because we're in Quebec, like just get, so, yeah, he may be shifting languages soon. We'll see, from Spanish to French. But I think these are just great, great programs, and I think it's And I think it sort of expands into other places in the community when some people see and some of those students come back with other stories. So a lot of benefit there. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you so much. Do we need to vote?
Yeah.
There is a motion.
There's nothing in the packets, I think we should, they're on the fly.
Motion to approve the April 15th, April 25th, 2026 field trip to Rome and Athens.
Second. Motion's being seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Unanimous, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That's it for me.
Wonderful. Okay. It'd be a late night. I just had a couple of comments and questions in Chair's comments for item number 10. The first would be to Dr. Lyons. I'm wondering if in our last meeting, we made a statement and you released it to sort of staff and employees of the district. And I think some, some folks, including myself, shared it out on social media. But I got an email inquiring about if that, if that could be made available to parents. So I was wondering if we could share it out with families from the district that maybe didn't see it via other means. I think I had mistakenly said, I think everybody got it. And I sometimes get my personal mixed up with my WPSK email. I'm like, nope, I'm wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that had been shared, but we can send it out again?
Okay.
And I, and I know, and I, because the reason I know it's been shared is because we've had some teachers and administrators from some other districts reach out to both myself and Kara and ask for copies because they would like to use that as a model to share with their districts as well.
Okay.
So, but we can touch base tomorrow and?
What was the title of, of the email? Just so I can see if it was in my personal.
I can.
I don't remember seeing it in my personal, so I don't think.
I get it confused too.
Okay, we can certainly.
I saw the staff one, but I don't think.
Yeah, I saw the staff one and then obviously then on social media.
It went to, it went to the item. Was it in the item?
There was a.
It was in the item, I think.
It was an item article, yeah.
So I will, I will kind of try to pull it up while we're doing business here and I will let you know.
My other question would be directed to Kara. And not to sort of put you on the, the spot here, but I'm wondering, you sent out, I think it was today or yesterday, an invite to a number of people about doing a highlight on literacy programming that we're doing in the elementary school.
Sure.
I just know that's going to happen neck, before our next meeting. I'm wondering if you just give a high-level sort of description of, of why that's being highlighted and sort of some of the good work that's going on there.
Absolutely. So the invitation I sent out today was for next week, March 6. We have been working, our elementary reading specialists, classroom teachers, curriculum coach and coordinator have been working closely with Hill for Literacy, which is an organization to support early literacy rooted in the science of reading. We initially signed on with them following our ELA review and wanted their support in helping us to streamline our intervention process. We, as you know, as we've talked about, adopted a new core literacy program. Also have focused a lot of professional development on our foundational skills work for, for students. And then with that, we wanted to align the work of our reading specialist group. And so you might hear that students might be picked up for reading support by reading specialists, maybe even before a special education referral. Our goal was to make sure that we were, we had research-based interventions that were aligned with our core curriculum happening for set points of time. We established criteria for when, when students will be picked up, how to look at our data, how to structure the interventions. And Hill for Literacy was part of all of that work and supporting us, also supporting coaching work that's happening. So Darcy Burns is the head of Hill for Literacy. And she had reached out to Dr. Lyons and I and said, you know, we'd really love to, you know, invite Senator Lewis to Wakefield because it really, you know, she's, she's proud of the collaboration. We're proud of the collaboration. And we thought it would be a nice way to highlight the early literacy work that's happening here because it's talk, there's talk about it across the state, whether it's, you know, high-quality instructional materials, science of reading, right to read, literacy launched from the state level. There's a lot of conversation happening right now. And we're really proud of the efforts that we've made the last, really the last three years to get Wakefield in a better spot. So Senator Lewis has, is coming to Wakefield and we're going to show him some of this work in action and then host a little reception at Woodville where we provide some context for the work that we've done and probably take some pictures. So it should be, it should be a nice event.
Thank you.
We're really excited for it.
That's awesome. So it's like a great day when sort of the other district outside of Wakefield sort of recognizes the, sort of the hard work that's going on. It sort of gives an added layer of value and sort of validation, which is, which is great. So thank you for the invite.
Of course. I know it's not at an ideal time, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on a Thursday. So I understand if everybody can't make it.
If we were all state legislators, surely. Okay.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
I, I also want to let the committee know that on, on Monday, March 3rd, that Helga Nellmed is a 97-year-old Holocaust survivor who is going to be coming to Wakefield Memorial High School to meet with students during G Block. There's going to be kind of two classes in the Savings Bank Theater. And it's going to be kind of quite an opportunity for them. So there'll be students and staff that will be present. I think Mr. Mayo's coming over. If you're free during that time, I know it's a kind of short notice. We were, we've been working with our local rabbi here in town to, to, to set this up and it kind of came together pretty quickly. And we're really pleased to, to offer this to students, right? The, the opportunity to meet a Holocaust survivor is, is kind of a, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for many. So we're, we're very kind of pleased to be able to offer this. And, and we think it's going to be kind of very, really kind of moving for our students. So that's where.
What time is it?
It is at 12:14 on Monday, the 3rd.
And I think I recently read she's also going to be at the Reading High School auditorium and you can sign up for free tickets.
That's an evening event?
Yes, as well. So that's open to the public, but you have to go through.
Will that be Monday, the 3rd as well?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head. There was a flyer, it's not run by the town, it's a private event, but it's open to anyone for free. And there was a flyer that has the information that's floating around the community.
Holocaust survivors, much like World War II veterans, are a population that is sort of gradually leaving us. It's important to sort of take these opportunities to speak with them and to get the living history that they sort of embody when you can. So that's really fortunate that we have the opportunity to have our students sort of meet and, and discuss maybe relevant topics. Thank you for, for coordinating.
That's my pleasure, my pleasure.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Finance and Facilities, Mr. Markham.
Thank you. Our next meeting is this coming Friday. I think we've had a meeting since, since our last school committee meeting. We've been meeting about every other week for the last, you know, month or, month or two. We can continue to, to receive and provide feedback to Doug and Christine and the admin team about where they're landing for fiscal '26. At our last meeting, Tim O'Brien also joined us to provide an update on facilities, things that had been, had, had been worked on both over, over Christmas break and at that point, things that were anticipated to be worked on during February break. So that's, so that, that progresses. In the meeting, as I said, our next meeting is this coming Friday morning at 8:00 AM. Also to, we talked to, I mentioned this at the last school committee meeting, but we've now sort of, you know, pinned it down. Our budget workshop with the finance, with the Town Finance Committee is going to be Saturday morning, March 22 at 9:00 AM at the Galvin. So that program and that, that agenda is coming together. And so we'll have obviously an update at our next meeting when the program is, or the agenda rather, is finely tuned, we'll, we'll share that now. So certainly the, the, it's a, it's a public meeting. It's a meeting of the, of the subcommittee with our liaisons for a particular agenda around obviously fiscal '25 and '26 planning. But the community's invited and obviously all, everyone is welcome to participate.
Tom, is that the meeting with the liaisons from FinCom?
It is. Well, I would imagine.
I don't know if this is the one with, with everybody.
I would imagine that there will be, there will likely be other members of, of the Finance Committee in attendance as well. The, 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 the design of the meeting was to have the FinCom liaisons get a tighter view of things and be able to ask questions in a, in a more, in a less constricted environment than we are at a Finance Committee meeting on a, you know, when we're jam-packed in a, in a, you know, in one of those agendas. So, but it's certainly, it's a, it's a public meeting and we, we welcome anyone to join.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Labor and Personnel, Dr. Scalo.
Yeah, thank you. A couple things. I am hoping at our March 11th meeting, we'll be introducing our new school committee clerk. So yes, I'm very happy about that. I think we have a wonderful candidate. We had a wonderful group of people that had applied. Thanks to Mr. Markham for kind of helping wordsmith the contract a little bit. So our hope is that that'll get to her this week and then we'll be introducing her on the 11th. So very excited about that. Yesterday, we met for our negotiations with the WEA Unit C. It was the final meeting of exchanging proposals. So now I think we've got to roll up our sleeves and start to make some good responses to things that have been put forth. We do have some, some, I think, easy TAs that we were able to make and now kind of really getting into the, the important issues around time and money and those sorts of things. So we do have four meetings scheduled. I'm hoping that's all we're going to need. Kind of feeling, feeling optimistic about this. So our next meeting is going to be March 14th. That's on a Friday at 3:30. Then that will be, there'll be a meeting the following Tuesday, the 18th. We have one again Friday, the 28th. And then one last one, hopefully on April 14th, on that Monday. So we'll be meeting again. We'll be posting a meeting soon for, for the subcommittee to get together with the administration to continue to work on our, our stuff and our responses to the things that have come forward. So good meeting yesterday, good conversation, good questions and some give and take back and forth. And so looking forward to continuing this process. So that's all we have for Labor.
That's great. Thank you. And thank you for all the, the hard work with everybody with the secretary position and every dead negotiations. I know those are long hours for both groups on both sides. And so that's, that is a, that's a lot, a lot of work there. Student Services, Ms. Collins.
We have not met since the last meeting. I believe Dr. Lyons gave an update on the final community forum last meeting. So, but we're just going to keep moving along. We're going to be putting out a survey to the, to the community stakeholders and.
We're also going to be meeting with faculty.
Yes.
Getting a time to meet with faculty as a part of our next steps. So, yeah.
So more, more to come on that for the Late Start Time Initiative.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Davis.
We have not met in terms of policy communications, but I have a couple of topics to share with the group tonight as well as two motions either were on the table from last week to, or two policies that have motions to go for vote tonight. So in terms of two updates, let's see. I heard from Ms. Cummings, the WEA president, today. I'm still waiting to get some times from her and dates to follow up on the field trip policy. So once we have that next discussion, which will include Dr. Lyons and hopefully our WEA leaders, then hopefully we'll have another subcommittee meeting where we can wordsmith a new version of that field trip policy to hopefully then bring something back to this full committee again. We also received through you, Mr. Chair, some correspondence from a community member about a couple of oversights in some of the MASC book reviews that we just approved in the last meeting. And the two points she made were both valid. One was regarding.
Naming.
Naming, and the other is retirement of facilities. So we will work to make adjustments to those policies to ensure that they are.
Align.
Align with both the town charter and town council's jurisdiction in that, that area. It certainly wasn't anything done on purpose and we'll make sure that that is aligned correctly and, and put a further revision forward.
I would offer up, Town Councilor Bob Vincent wanted to make sure that you knew that he was, he wanted to offer his services from a legal perspective and he might have some time if he wanted to go over, you know, sort of.
He might.
Yeah, he might. If, if you want to talk about, you know, where, how to better align those, those policies.
Awesome. Yeah, I don't think it'll be all that difficult to reference existing policies that, that we already have in town. It's more just a case of, you know, figuring out going forward, how do we try to? Yeah, I think some of these, I, we probably knew in our head, but just missed it as we were reviewing it. And how do we catch these better, given we have limited people who are on these, you know, on our, on our subcommittee giving inputs?
Yep, sure.
So if there's anything to pass off to Counselor Vincent, he'll be in to Central Office tomorrow afternoon. He's doing some planning for the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial. And so if there's anything to pass off to him, we can also, we can touch base with him.
I mean, you could provide him those two sections and just ask him if he wants to wordsmith some revisions to them to make him compliant with the charter and town council's jurisdictions. I mean, I'd be glad.
Happy to do it.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
Just give him those two sections.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we do have two motions for today. These are the policies we laid on the table in the last meeting.
Okay.
First one, motion to approve the CPAC policy 223 as presented.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Wonderful. Pass unanimously.
And the second, motion to approve the Code of Conduct for Wakefield Public Schools Department Employees Policy as presented.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion?
The only thing I should add here is, Tom, you were going to give me that sentence to add as a name here.
Or change the title.
Yeah, do you, maybe, or just maybe put it under the current title? Do you want to give that name here so we have on the record for when we approve it?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Oh, we just make the.
Yeah, we just need an amendment.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we can amend the motion to include, I mean, remember, actually.
You could make up a do it.
If I'm remembering, my thought was that something around, around expectations. I think, I'm sorry, I apologize for not.
Yeah, and I put you, I put you on the fly.
I think, you know, I think that, that the, that the subcommittee had, you know, in working with the administration and members of the WEA had really landed in a good place, I, I think. And I feel that this, you know, calling this a code of conduct is a little, is, was a little harsh to me. And I was thinking more of a, oh, professional expectations or a professional behavior.
Code of professional expectations? Or is code the word you object to?
Code was the word I was trying to avoid. And I'm sorry that I'm not prepared for this.
No, it's my fault. How about just professional expectations for Wakefield Public School Department employees? And then amend it to just replace that current title with that? How's that?
Professional Expectations for Wakefield Public School District Employees, removing Code of Conduct.
Is that the motion?
Yes.
Good pivot, Pete.
It's a long motion.
Usually I'm a be prepared kind of guy.
I was saying, motion has been made and seconded to include the amendment of the, the.
Title changed.
Title change.
As presented.
As presented.
Second again.
Any further discussion?
There's some other typos in there. Do we want to, do you want to correct those now or just leave them?
Is it typos? Is it like to the body of the?
It's just grammatical.
Okay, then let's just make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is before it gets posted.
Yeah.
So long as it's not of substance.
No, it's not of substance.
Okay, okay. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
All right, those in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you so much for, yeah, those also took a while to get done. So, I know, government's like a glacial thing.
What's worth doing is worth doing well.
This is true. This is true. Okay, moving on. Anything else from Policy and Comms?
No.
Thank you so much. Um, any liaison reports? Eileen?
Uh, the Lynnfield and Wakefield CPAC is having an event tomorrow evening over Zoom, um, from 6:00 to 7:00. And there is a flyer, I don't know, I believe it's on their Wakefield CPAC's Facebook page if anyone is looking for it. And there was an email that went out yesterday or today. Um, but they're having an event with a speaker named Beth Ross, who is the Bureau of Special Education Appeals mediator, and it's all about the process of mediation if it ever gets to that point. Um, and, uh, just a really great session to, to learn about that process. So that's tomorrow evening.
Fantastic. I think it's so great how CPAC empowers sort of paths. Um, and I think the, the approach of mediation can also, can sometimes feel like a, a bridge too far and a hard line to cross when really it should just be a healthy partnership.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I appreciate sort of CPAC's ability to sort of message that well and help people feel empowered by a process, not scared of it.
Yes. Yeah. And I love that Wakefield CPAC is always working with other CPACs, um, in the area and, and doing events together, so.
Yeah, no, they're a model for collaboration.
Yeah.
Yep. Awesome. Um, anyone else? All right, Mr. Fontenelle?
The environmental sustainability, uh, committee met last, um, last Thursday, I believe. Um, we discussed idling signs, especially in the spring when, um, you know, it, you know, it doesn't, obviously in the winter, you know, we want people to, it seems a little more reasonable for people to stay in their heated car, but definitely within the, uh, in the spring, we definitely want, uh, to discourage idling. So we want to make sure that idling signs were, uh, posted at all the public schools. Um, so just wanted to bring that up. I, I think the signs are there, but, uh, I haven't, no, they're not there. Okay, someone said it was, so we had two reports that there were, I think one of the Dolbeir and then.
Galvin. Galvin, I know.
Okay, okay. So, we talked to Tim, Tim about that.
Good.
Um, composting, uh, so we, we talked about trying to improve composting at the schools. Definitely talking about communication in May and June, you know, prepping for the next school year, uh, with all the building principals to keep improving on the process. Uh, we basically talked about, you know, how it's all about systems and having a good, uh, solid system and the personnel, uh, that have buy-in at all the schools, uh, to work on it. So that's definitely an initiative that, um, that we'll, uh, try to improve on. Uh, we did talk a little bit about electric school buses. Uh, we, nothing, nothing like urgent, but it, it definitely was discussed. Um, there have been articles, uh, both statewide and nationally, um, about the utility of electric school buses compared with diesel. Um, and you can get an article that says, electric school buses are definitely the way to go, where there's no issues. And then you'll get an article that says they don't work in cold weather. Um, so I, I definitely recommend it that, like, we, you know, if this is an initiative that the district wants to pursue, uh, that we definitely, uh, do our due diligence with the research and, you know, definitely get all the correct material instead of just, like, Googling one article that looks great for our interests. Um, so, um, definitely want to look at research on that. And I know with the, and I know with the, um, there was an article in the Globe about, uh, the mandate for electric trucks in Massachusetts and how there's been like no charging stations that have been built. The infrastructure just hasn't been built within the state. You know, um, so I know this is definitely on, you know, on the mind of the committee and I think it's something that, um, the town's looking at as well. I think that was discussed. Was that on town council last night?
They talked about, um, climate, climate leaders, um, last night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not specifically about electric buses or?
Um, heavy-duty vehicles.
Okay.
As it related to DPW and then it would, and then buses would be included.
Okay.
I do know when I had asked about this originally and it came from an inquiry we got from members of the ESC, um, our, our buses aren't owned by us. So it's, it's unlike say Worcester where they own their buses and they can make a decision to buy an electric school bus. We, we go to NRT or whatever and they're, they buy whatever buses. So some of the things that make sense for a district who owns their own equipment may be more difficult for us where we're, we're not the owner of those buses.
Yeah.
Of course.
And then STEAM Night at the Galvin is on April 15th. Um, that's a great event. Uh, that profiles a lot of great environmental initiatives.
Great event.
Yep. And that is it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Oh, Dr. Lyons?
Just, it was, uh, brought up earlier, Monday evening, um, at Reading Memorial High School, Helga Nellmed, um, will be presenting there at, at 7:00 PM and that the door is open at 6:30. So just to keep anyone who might be interested in attending that event.
And that does require you to go online and reserve a seat.
Correct.
It's free, but you have to reserve a seat.
Correct.
Great.
Thanks, Pete.
Just to go back to your ESC, um, thing, um, Kevin, I'm just curious about, and I know you guys have, ESC has youth advisors.
Yes.
I just want to comment, um, when I sat in as a youth counsel or, um, sort of liaison, the composting and recycling came up and what I had heard from a number of those students in that space was that the idea of consistency came up and how great it would be if, um, there was a, um, like, a, a clear lineage of like symbols and maybe colors and stuff that happened in elementary all the way through middle and high school. Cause it seems like when you sort of change a level, um, how you mark something changes and so kids get to a new school and they're like, I don't know where to put my stuff. And if it's sort of something that's talked, um, all the way back to sort of when they're in elementary, early elementary, it's something that carries.
Yeah, and, and again, it's just systems, right? So we have four elementary schools. So it's really, really hard to, you know, get four elementary schools with identical systems.
It is.
Right? So I think, um, but yeah, I know it's a great idea to streamline the process.
And little kids don't want to take the stickers off their bananas or their apples. It's so hard. Okay. Uh, Pete, do you have a liaison?
Uh, so the Human Rights Commission is meeting right now, um, but the one update I can give is, uh, they are hosting an International Women's Day Forum. It will be at the High School Savings Bank Theater on Thursday, March 6th from 7:00 to 8:00. And, uh, they have about a half dozen women so far who've been announced to be on the panel. Many names I recognize as just really super smart people, so I'm sure it's going to be quite interesting.
It might actually be 7:00 to 8:30.
Uh, did I, that's, okay, they, they may change the time as I was saying.
Is that in the Black Box Theater?
Yes, the, the Savings Bank.
Yep, yep. Cool. I went to that last year, it was great. Um, they actually had a student, um, there as well who spoke. She was like one of them.
Rock star.
Incredibly eloquent, yeah. Makes you feel bad about yourself, but that's okay. That's what we're here for. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, okay. Um, our next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, March 11th, uh, 2025, same time. Um, and are there any school committee comments? Kevin?
Yeah, just, I think it was mentioned, uh, oh, actually, I think Melissa might have mentioned about the, um, oh, this is about me getting signatures. About February 27th, at the Galvin Middle School, there is a, uh, there's a, gonna be a theater production, um, and, uh, they're doing the Minotaur, um, which is a, a play